Evening. Thank you for coming. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Town Council for November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Would you be kind enough to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, would you do the roll, please? Here.
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 Next, we have recognition.
Lisa, if you could kindly look forward. Tonight, the Town Council would like to honor Lisa Carruth for thirty-seven years of wonderful service to the town of Watertown. And the certificate reads Certificate of Excellence honoring Lisa Elph Carruth given by the Watertown Town Council in recognition of Lisa's thirty-seven years of standing commitment and diligence to the Watertown community in her role as Director of Human Social Improvement Services. Recognition, best wishes, and appreciation is hereby bestowed upon Lisa Carruth. Dated at Watertown, Connecticut, this twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty-three, signed, Mary Ann Rosa, Chair of Watertown Town Council. Lisa, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you again.
Well, Lisa spent the last week in court because she was called to relax. Our Representative Joe Paletti would like to present a citation of Lisa as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark, and welcome, Mark. I really, very briefly, just want to say, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, we had Mrs. Farnham here. A couple of weeks ago, we had the retirement party for Lisa, and I never knew what the tennis courts looked like, but I had a heart back there because there were so many people. I got a nice tour of the facility, but it was a true testament to what you mean to our town and how well-loved you are. And, you know, just hearing the stories that night about you and seeing the pictures and the history, there's so much history here, and I mean it. As a friend, as somebody who, before politics, you've done so much for our town. And I know you coined that phrase, the quality of life department, and I see it on all the trucks, and if you drive around town, you'll see, you're quality of life department in Watertown. And it really is a quality of life department. It's the things that our citizens love and enjoy that most of the time they get as part of being a resident of Watertown. So, you know, when somebody asks you, what do you get as being a resident of Watertown? Well, you see, beautiful senior center, the parks, all the events that go on. Those are all things that go into what Lisa's contributed to over thirty-seven years.
How many?
One. I didn't want to be the one to say it.
I remember when you were born.
It was a miraculous day. Christmas is coming up next. But in all seriousness, on behalf of Senator Ruffell and myself, we ordered this unfortunately once available the night of the party, so we're here tonight, but I'd just like to read it. This is an official citation from the state of Connecticut. It is, it's a high honor to receive this, and it's signed by the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, and the Secretary of the State. And know that your name will be in the records, and it says, in recognition of Lisa Carruth for your thirty-seven years of service to the town of Watertown. The entire membership extends its hereby best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Now, I don't know what the next success is. You know what I'm up for election, you can run against me. It's a nice easy job, I want it, I want it, for like one fourth of what you were making for. It's, it's, you know, I'll just end by saying this, we're so fortunate in the town to have people like you that have dedicated literally their whole life to the town at a time where, like, you talk to some of my colleagues, and people are moving positions, and you see, you know, towns having problems filling vacancies. Thirty-seven years is unbelievable. So, I'm very proud of you, I know our town manager's proud of you, our council's proud of you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Love you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion on the October sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
Do we have a second? Second, are there any corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone abstaining? Our newest member would probably abstain.
Oh, I viewed the meeting.
I abstained.
Make a motion to approve the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
Abstained.
One abstention. Onto the chairman's report. A few things. There are going to be some changes you're going to see in our meetings. The first thing is the public comment will now be called public participation. The guidelines, obviously, still will stand as far as how we conduct ourselves, but we will attempt to answer a question when we're asked, if we know the answer. If we don't, we'll be glad to obtain the information and let you know. We're going to very strictly adhere to the comment that no employee's name, performance, or actions are to come under discussion or mention at any council meeting. If that occurs, the microphone will be shut off, and the person will be asked to leave the speaker's table. That's something that you can convey to anyone that wishes to come in in that manner. One of the other things you're going to see in the future is we have about thirty or thirty-one projects that the town manager and the council have worked on, all involving money that we've received or money we've allocated from Public Works projects to projects the manager has going with special committees. We're going to take one of those projects every month and update you on where it stands so that you have a handle on the status of what's going on in town, and also how the money's being spent, and where we are with the timeline on each of those projects. Hopefully, that'll keep everyone more informed about what's going on. And you'll also see on the next agenda the list of all the subcommittees and the chairman's names, and even if there isn't a report, we want you to know who is chairing each committee so that should you have a question, you know who to go to. Other than that, for now, I think that's probably the only comments or changes that will be visible. Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Town Council. I'd just like to update you on some of those projects that you've just talked about. The Wilson Street Bridge, the installation has been completed, and the contractor is currently backfilling in preparation for a temporary reopening of the area during the winter months. Additionally, gas lines are being installed along the bridge as outlined in the plan. Guernsey Town Road work is currently underway and will proceed as feasible throughout the winter season. The Steel Brook Greenway is a public, we held a public hearing, which was conducted on November fourteenth. The purpose of that meeting was to gather public testimony to incorporate into the, into the, rolling my D's here, into the design phase of the project. The period for public comment will remain open for two weeks from that November fourteenth date. The Munson House, we have been approved for bonding amounting to five hundred thousand dollars for improvements to the Marion Munson Park. The immediate next steps include finalization of the paperwork for the reimbursable grant. Once this is done, we will proceed to solicit bids for the project. Initially, our request was for eight hundred thousand dollars, intended for the replacement of exterior siding, windows, doors, and the HVAC system. With the award of five hundred thousand dollars, our plan is to judiciously utilize these funds and go after the exterior of the building to make that weather tight, and if we have money left over, we will improve the HVAC system. I've already updated regarding the Main Street project. We did have a meeting recently. We pushed out an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, for a design firm. That closed on November eighth, and we've set a December fifth meeting date to actually review those applicants that applied, and we will choose somebody from that grouping. Paving and proactive response, during the recent construction season, there was a significant amount of roadwork. I've requested that the Chief of Police and the Director of Public Works collaborate to identify areas with newly improved pavement. The goal is to proactively patrol these areas to enhance speed awareness amongst drivers. The chief has employed strategies such as using speed sensor signs, proactive patrolling, and public service announcements to achieve those goals. Hiring, the position for Park and Recreation Director and our Economic Development Director, those positions were up. November seventeenth was the closing date for our Public Park and Recreation Director, and November twenty-fourth, the closing will be for our Economic Development Coordinator. We will be scheduling interviews for these positions in the early part of December to have those positions filled. I know we talked about the Health Fund Audit back probably around the August timeframe. King &amp; King has completed an audit and review of our Health Fund covering the years two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. I currently have a draft of reviews and have reviewed the results. The Board of Education has requested supporting documents for this review, and they are conducting their own independent analysis. Dr. V. and I plan to meet in December to kind of look at both reviews, and then I expect to present both reviews to the council for further instruction. We completed a health insurance review mid-month of this month. The town conducted its annual review with R&amp;J Insurance to assess the performance of our health insurance plan. As of now, the costs associated with our plan have remained very stable. One of our software implementation was Q Alert. It's the customer relation software. We've had a soft, a soft implementation of that software internally through Public Works IT and the town manager's office. At this point, it's, it's working very well. It gives us the ability not only to track our workload, but it also gives us an opportunity to kind of quantify that workload and ensure that nothing falls through the cracks. So, we'll end up with managers and department heads will end up with automatic emails just saying, this project was started, there's been no work on it for the last five days, please review. So, it'll make us more efficient. We are going through the reevaluation process, a revaluation process. We are nearing the completion of the property revaluation. Property owners have begun receiving notices regarding this. The Assessor's Office has been focusing on creating clear and informative messaging to help property owners fully comprehend the revaluation process. The aim is to reduce the likelihood of tax appeals in the future. Additionally, you can expect to see more information on this topic being shared through our social media channels and on the town website. Financial software, I did kind of mention that we were having issues, continued issues with our financial software. Today, the Finance Department and I completed a SWOT analysis of our current financial software. This is the initial phase. We evaluated the strengths, the weaknesses, any opportunities with the current software, and threats as we move forward. We plan to collaborate with Councilman Ramsey to review the findings from this analysis before determining the town's next steps. Once this analysis is fully detailed, I will provide a comprehensive report to the entire council for your review. We started auditing for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget year with King &amp; King auditors as we address remaining issues from the recent software change, which is in our second full year, and some of the personnel changes. We are anticipating a delay in finalizing that audit. We don't expect it to go past the month, but that's, we're not that far enough along to determine that amount. I will keep the council up to date as we get closer to finalization. We do have the Daughters of American Revolution, which will be holding a Saturday meeting down at the old cemetery on Main Street in French on December sixteenth, sixteenth at twelve o'clock. If any council members would like to attend that, it's a very nice demonstration by DAR. I would like to thank Lauren Laporta. If you, when you came into the council chambers, you noticed there's a QR code on the TV in front. She developed that, and she actually did a great job on the organizing that printout where you could actually scan it with your phone, and the agenda will come up for the meetings as we move forward. And I think that's all for me.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, item A.
I move to appoint Edward Norton as a regular member of the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission to fill an unexpired term of Mr. Pierre Moran for a term to expire January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Item B.
I move to approve the proposed Crestbrook Park golf fees for two thousand and twenty-four effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a few comments for us?
First of all, are there any questions? And second of all, a little history of this year. Our last fiscal year, the golf course made just a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're chipping away at the deficit, and the reason for no fee increase is, one, we've got a good thing going. We were again voted the area's top golf course, Reader's Choice. Second of all, coming into a presidential election year, economies go haywire because nobody knows what's going to happen, what hap, in November, when a new president or an existing president sits down. The one thing we did adjust was the golf cart rates, and that may seem like a small, mundane item, but it's being proactive. We've been told that procurement for parts to build new golf carts is out at least eighteen months. Our contract is up in two thousand and twenty-five. So, we're being proactive now, looking at it, because we want to update what we're doing with our golf carts. Two things. One of them, we want to go to a GPS system. GPS system, yeah, it looks like it's carte blanche, but in reality, it's a maintenance issue. You can put as many signs out there as you want about cart pass only when the weather is bad, and nobody reads them. But with a GPS system, the golf pro on any given day can block out areas, so golf cart gets near there, the cart stops. There's no way for them to drive into greens, which causes damage. Again, that's all maintenance items that have to be taken care of. The other item being, most eighteen-hole golf courses, it's standard sixty golf carts. Okay? We're up to forty-four golf carts. Two things. This year, we tried a program where we rented carts from Memorial Day to Labor Day at a reduced rate, and they weren't our normal carts. They barely had four tires and a gas pedal to go. They were strictly stripped-down models. Well, in looking at the numbers, those golf carts more than paid for themselves. Having our own, at whatever level we have the golf carts being, and our golf tournaments. Our golf tournaments have been growing in size. Numbers, yes, we lost one or two, we gained four or five. But we have to pay an additional rental fee when we bring other golf carts in to take care of the golf tournaments. If we go to sixty, where we don't run out on weekends anymore, and most of the golf tournaments that we run, we can cover with sixty carts, so we'll no longer be spending that money to bring in golf carts, and they're on-site. You know, the good thing about it is they're on-site, they don't have to be brought in and brought out. So, that was the caveat with the raising the golf cart fees. The fees as far as the memberships, memberships were up this year. We finally climbed back above two hundred, still not at the level of two thousand and eight when it was four hundred and twenty-five, which realistically, you're never going to see that, golf memberships now, for us, is a good thing with the golf leagues we got running. But on the other side of it, there's a lot more people out there doing just the same you do on the internet. You're shopping for your best price. They don't pay golf cart memberships, they don't pay golf fee memberships because they want to search the field looking for the specials. And now with our Golf T program, which is online, we're competitive in that area, too. So, I just want to, before you approve the fees, want to let you know why. We decided not to increase the fees, but the golf cart fees, and to give you the good news. One thing I'm not happy about, Mother Nature didn't treat us good this year, but in checking with other courses, we really weren't that bad. I have one course, and I won't name it, had thirty-eight days, they were shut down because of water. Crestbrook had sixteen. Those are days where we had to just shut the course down because there was so much water. This time of year, we're in frost weather. Doesn't shut the course down, it's just a late opening. But a lot of courses around here, we all suffered the same, so nobody was making a dollar off of Crestbrook because we were shut on those days. They were closed, too.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
And hopefully, Mother Nature.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions you wouldn't like to ask? Yes, Gary.
I see the golf carts are twenty dollars. Is that for each, so it'll be forty dollars a cart if there's two people on it?
Yeah.
And then if you, in the future, if you do get the extra golf carts, so, do you have room to store them up there?
Yes. Yeah, we'll make arrangements at the end of the maintenance shed to be storing extra golf carts up there. Yes, we have to. We're being proactive, looking to make money.
Rachel.
I guess I'm not totally clear on why you're not raising the rates. If you said you have a good thing going and things are competitive, it seems like, and you're trying to chip away at the deficit, it seems like a small increase might, might make some sense and bring in more revenue.
Okay, we brought in, we had a small increase last year.
Right, I remember that.
Okay. Don't want to go every year. You start going every year, and we're going to get back to the area. What happened back in two thousand and eight, where you spooked people, and off they went. We've got a loyal clientele right now, and the things we're doing with the rates is keeping them coming back. The good thing about the rates and the golf now thing is, we're looking at the logistics. We're getting a lot of people from the lower valley area, we're getting a lot of people from Fairfield County coming up and golfing for the first time, and then coming back. And we're competitive with the other courses. If you try to outbeat the other courses, thinking you're going to make money by raising rates, it's the worst thing. That's what happened back in two thousand and eight, when they decided that, well, to balance the budget for the golf course, some areas got raised forty-two percent. That's why you went from four hundred and twenty-five memberships down below a hundred and fifty. We don't want to see that happen again.
Okay. Anybody else?
To the chair.
Yes.
Roughly, how much is this GPS system going to cost to put in these golf carts?
I have no numbers right now. We're just specing out what we would like to see with different manufacturers, but we're doing it now rather than waiting until the last second and then hearing, well, now it's going to take eighteen months to get those carts.
Thank you.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the rates, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents for reimbursements to the Public Works Vehicle Equipment Line. Funds received from Travelers Insurance for a claim due to a motor vehicle incident.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the installation of an awning over the Town Council Chambers outside doors.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mark, would you comment on this for the public, please?
Thank you. So, we do have water infiltration on the north, north side of the building and on the south side of the building. On the north side of the building, we've been able to mitigate that by sealing up the brick. Burlington Construction, who is still in possession of our building technically, has, is going in the future, committing, saw cut the concrete area of the north side and install a drain for us to capture any water that may come into the building through the north side. On the south side, it's not so easy for us to seal that area, so we did meet with Burlington Construction, and we felt that it, the best, at this point, it's in our best interest to install an awning to divert the majority of the water away from the area in which it's seeping into the building. We have recently had complaints that possibly there was mold in the building as a result of this leakage. We did bring a company in, we, we did some testing. There is, I'm not a scientist, so I can't give you the hundred percent proper terms. We do have some mold spores, but there's nothing that we have to worry regarding staffing. We have taken some mitigating practices as in using a dehumidifier, creating a fan, using fan to dissipate the water, and before our parking direct, our parking rec director left, she was actually pouring bleach on the water to ensure that we stayed, our employees stayed safe. So, this is our best recommendation to create a best practice for the south side of the building with what we've already and are going to do in the future on the north side.
Any other questions?
And just to confirm, is the awning just over the doors right out here, or is it the whole front of the building, or what is it?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall the exact dimensions, but I believe it's going to be six feet past the end of the doors so that, to ensure that we are diverting this off this front stoop where we enter into the Town Council Chambers.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chair. I have a couple of questions. The first question is, did this, did we bid, have more bids for this work, for the awning?
This is just a quote to get this, the job done, and this is, this is under our threshold to do bidding, so at this point, we would probably just go forward with the project.
And I'm certainly not an expert in this field, but I just, I guess I just don't understand how an awning is going to divert water away from the building and then also provide shelter as people walk into the building. Where is that water going to go? Because if the awning is slanted, won't the water then just like land on the steps out front, or is it going to be slanted and go this way and then like hit the parking lot where like the superintendent's car parks? Am I understanding what you've described? I, I just don't understand how it's going to keep the water from getting in the building.
I think you have the concept correct, but what happens with these types of awnings, if you look in the back or down by the front building on the main parking lot, they have an internal gutter system that collects the water, and then it'll divert it to one of the downspouts on this corner of the building. So, it won't be a complete runoff. That would produce ice in the winter, and it would be a whole host of other issues.
Okay, so then my follow-up question to that is, why can't we just use gutters? Why do we need an awning? Wouldn't that be less money than installing a whole awning? Wouldn't that be less money than installing a whole awning?
Well, we do have gutters that are installed on the front of the building. The problem is with winds and the application of the rain against the building, it creates that down, you know, down flow of water. What it runs right down the front of the building, it ends up going between the building and the stoop of the foundation, or the stoop of the stairs. So we're ending up with issues there. So this is to get that water away from the front of the building to create that barrier so that we don't, don't end up with water in the downstairs area.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Anyone objecting?
I object.
Object?
I move to approve the job description for the position of assistant building official.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions?
My question is if, if I can just get a refresh of the organization of this department, because I know it's changed a little bit over the past couple of years, so, yeah, just the, just the basic organization of who is there now and the roles.
So basically, in the past, the building department actually had a department head and then a staff member, a building official. There was also additional staffing for other secretarial type work, technician type work. And I'm not 100% sure on the year, but 2018, 19, that was consolidated. The department head was removed from that organization, and it came underneath the authority of our planning and zoning administrator. And that's currently the way it's set up. Recently in the past, we had an agreement with Thomason where we shared a building official. Thomason no longer is interested in sharing a building official, they were able to find their own. So in creating this job description, we could have tried to keep this outside the union and did less than 20 hours. But then it's a problem with us trying to fill that position. Our, our building department is very busy, and it's, it's critical that we fill this position. If we go to a part-time position, we can keep it in that 20 to 24 hours, and that person would be entitled to time off as stated in the contract.
Okay, so, so we currently do not have an assistant?
That's correct. The person who was in that position resigned, I believe, in September.
Okay, I, two other questions. The, I, I know that you have to sign it, so anybody who hires this job will sign the, after they've read the job description? Because it's pretty detailed, I just want to make sure they...
I didn't, I don't understand the question.
Oh, just that, once somebody accepts this position, they will have to sign the job description after reading through it?
That's correct. That's to ensure that they understand the obligations to the job description.
Okay, and then it said at the very end that they would have to pass an oral and written interview? I was a little confused by that language. Like, did they just have to have an interview, or what does it mean they have to pass, pass
So I don't think I could answer that question off the top of my head. Ray, our human resource director would probably be better to answer that question.
Thank you. Good evening. You are correct. Basically, we'll set up a panel interview and all that there. So the candidates will go through a face-to-face interview.
Okay. Okay. So it's not like a test where they have to pass?
Some positions, but not this particular one.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the job description for the position of senior center assistant coordinator.
Is there a second?
A second.
Question? Yes.
Was this a position that we were supposed to, they were supposed to fill after last year's budget? I know they asked extra money for, for more help down there, and I know they were shorthanded.
So this was put in this current year budget. We're just getting to the point of creating this job description and posting it. So it's, it's within this current year's budget.
Anyone else?
This job description seems fairly complex. I'm wondering how it compares to the job description of the senior center coordinator.
Ray, would you mind?
Yeah, so to create this, this job description, we did use the coordinator's position. We have the coordinator with us this evening, she's sitting right there, and basically looking at some other towns and all that there. And basically, the position is the number two position down there that will assist her with running the senior center and all the programs. In her absence, the assistant coordinator, you know, would step up and they would be in charge in her absence. So if you compare the two of them, the coordinator with the assistant and all that stuff there, they are very similar, but the language has changed. So basically, to fulfill the, the vacancy, the need.
Just one more question. Is it often that there's an absence?
It, it depends. Like, for example, the, one of the things the senior center does, they, they go on trips with the seniors and all that stuff there. So maybe the coordinator, one of them will stay behind while the other one goes on the trip to supervise the trip and all that there. So it's very possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Is there somebody in this position right now? I thought, I thought we had somebody who was helping out the coordinator.
This is a new position, so there is nobody in the position right now. There are, there are other positions at the senior center that assist the, work daily with the coordinator, but not an assistant coordinator.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the job description for the position of water and sewer controller.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have two questions about the, the education and experience. It says that they need to graduate from a recognized college or university. I was just curious what that term means, recognized. Would accredited be an equivalent term, or?
Accredited would be. Unfortunately, out there, there's a lot of universities or colleges, they're not all equal.
Yeah.
And so definitely accreditation would fit that term.
Okay. And then following up on that, just trying to understand the grammar of the way it's worded, where it says graduation from college or university, and then it says and, one year experience as bookkeeper, and then it says or graduation from high school or secondary technical school. So I just want to make sure that, that there is a requirement that they're a graduate of a college or university, and then the other bookkeeper experiences is like a, or they could have the experience or the high school credits? Am I reading that correctly?
You, you are.
Oh.
So pretty much to, you know, education is very important, but also experience and all that there. So we crafted that to address that, as you said, and all that there. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Anyone objecting? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to appropriate $530 from the general fund for the animal control technical services line item for the Water, Water Town Animal Shelter. Funds were received through donations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was a unanimous vote also.
I move to approve the resolution setting the town council regular meeting dates, times, and places for 2024.
Second.
Any questions? You have the schedule in front of you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Anyone not coming? That's a choice. Okay, can?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between line items for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation of $19,239.25 for tax refunds.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, I've noticed the resolution that we, that you just approved regarding the vehicle maintenance repairs is not on the agenda. So it would probably be in our best interest to add that to the agenda, then take the vote so that that flows properly.
Wait, you lost me. I was confused.
I'm not seeing on the agenda the, the item. Eight I, or H A, I'm sorry, on the agenda.
Item C.
In other words, you're saying there's an item that we need to add to the agenda that is not here.
I just want to read this real quick. I think it just isn't, doesn't explain it completely.
On the motion.
So J, I apologize, J does vaguely reference this. I think that that would be okay with the vote as it was taken.
So we're all right?
Yes. Sorry.
Okay.
Right. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing the settlement of pending litigation for the matter of Teresa Baldwin versus the Town of Water, Town Water and Sewer Authority. In attendance will be the town council members present, along with the town manager, Dave McMahon, Assistant Superintendent, Jerry Lukowski, Director of Public Works, and the town attorney.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please excuse us for a short time.
Recording stopped.